Okay, the meeting is called to order, please. The first thing on the agenda always is public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment on something other than an item on the agenda? If you're on the agenda, that's for later, but if you're not on the agenda and want to say something, that's for now. And anyone who wants to speak, you go to that microphone because it's included in what gets sent out on television to anyone who's watching. So you have to go there and say who you are and what your business is. So anyone want to say something for public comment? No? Okay. And let's go forward with our meeting. Paul, the minutes?
Yeah, I recommend approval of the minutes of April 28th, 26, 2020, as written.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. She's doing a nice job with the minutes. Yeah, she is. Okay. First republic meeting, our applicant, Conservation Group Incorporated, Green Seal Environment LLC, a site plan review application, which I understand they're seeking a continuance. Are you speaking for them, Jed?
I certainly can. We received the letter for continuance on May 3rd, and they are asking that they be continued to the next meeting, which is May 24th. They're just addressing some of the engineering comments that the division provided at the last meeting.
Right. Okay, so I move that we accept their request to be continued until May 24th.
Second? That was the second, Pam? All in favor?
Aye.
They're continued. Okay, next. The applicant is Jennifer Jaby. Yep, I'm going to mispronounce it. Jaby, Jaby, thank you. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory apartment at 63 Andrews Street. Jed? And Paul, do we have a notice?
Notice of this public hearing was published on 4/22/22, and 21 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Please go. Would you like to describe your-
Just summarize the project.
Oh, I'm sorry. Totally new to this. My name is Jennifer Jaby. What we are proposing is an accessory apartment on a detached garage, pre-existing garage, on the property at 63 Andrews Street. It will hold one bedroom, which we are removing a bedroom from the primary home to stay within the coastal-
The required number.
-guidelines. And it will be family-only, even though, I mean, it can be rented by bylaws, but it'll be family-only.
Don't take family-only. You don't need to be here if you say family-only. You need to be here if you want to rent it.
Then why am I here?
Well, it's a good thing to be here. You never know-
Because I ask-
You want to do this.
I ask these questions.
Excuse me, I shouldn't butt in, but I help with this bylaw. You want to get it approved and forget about the family.
Okay, I want to get it approved.
That's what you want to say. Sorry, I just want to give you direction on that because it's a different story if it's say family. Call it in-law apartment and you don't need to come here. But it makes your house more valuable if you get it rented. And we want apartments, so let's go.
Just for informational purposes, maybe your staff should know that when the public comes down to ask them about in-law apartments specifically.
I'm sorry. I-
This is not the point that we're here to debate. We're here to hear your application and see what it is you're doing.
Well, that is-
Could you go forward and describe the project? Do you have floor plans for this?
I do.
Yeah? Are they there?
You can use the mouse and just scroll down the application with the mouse wheel. There you go.
That is the proposed floor plan for the accessory apartment.
Yeah. And where is the change you're making in the house?
And I apologize because they are hand-drawn. I don't know if the physical copies were given to you.
I believe we have them.
But on the top sheet, we are removing a wall and combining two rooms on the first floor.
Did everybody here have a chance to go take a look at that so you know where the wall is being removed? Right.
Yes.
I don't think that anyone at home is going to be able to read that, or other people here in the audience can read it. But there's, at the end of a corridor, a wall that's probably, what would you say, three feet, four feet long?
I don't know if that helps. It is located right here, at the end of the corridor. I mean, the drawing is not professional or to scale, but the walls that is dividing the bedrooms is approximately the 11 points, well, no, because it's not the same. Probably about, around the six feet. I apologize, I didn't measure it because originally we were not removing this wall.
It's about as wide as a door.
It's actually wider, that's why I said it's not to scale. It is, it is wider. It is, and I apologize, I didn't, wasn't aware that I had to measure how that will is. There is, right now, the size of an opening in one room, that's the size of a double closet. So it's about two door frames wide.
Oh, okay.
Because it has like double closet doors.
Because of the scale of the bedrooms, it doesn't seem that way.
Yes. I apologize. I said when I originally did this, this wasn't the focus of what I was doing. I had to amend it, so.
Right, right, that's okay.
It's about two closet doors wide, and longer than that because the closets go in an inlet, and we're going to remove the wall. So I'd probably say, probably closer to six or seven feet, we're going to remove that wall and just have an opening way between the two rooms.
Right, that distance makes a difference in the way it's perceived and would be used. Any comments from the board?
Yeah.
John or Bob?
No, good to me.
No? Jim?
Oh, sir.
No, I think the report is good. I think it fulfills all the requirements, and I recommend approval.
We haven't seen a site plan.
We haven't seen the site plan. We're just working our way through.
And there's other discussion, too, other than this point.
Nothing so far, it looks good.
Okay, I have something so far, and I think it really had to do with my not knowing how wide that, how, whatever the word is, that wall is, how long it is, because it doesn't really appear, it would be very easy to still use the two rooms separately. They're real, because of the size of the rooms and the size, the location of the opening, they don't appear to be really separated. Whereas if the wall had been taken down, if you were proposing to take down the wall, separating it from the main hallway of one of the rooms and leave that closet, it would be more nearly clear that you're sacrificing one bedroom in order to put one over the garage.
If I was to get a measurement of exactly how long the wall is that we're removing, would that satisfy that?
I'm the only one who thinks that.
No, I think you're exactly right.
You're exactly right.
I believe, if you check, because I've built these things, I think the distance is five feet or four, instead of a doorway, and it makes it, you don't have to have them both open. You could have, one could remain private, the other one becomes non-privacy with the hallway going to it instead of a doorway and privacy, and therefore isn't a building, and that happens all the time. It's the width of the opening into the one room.
Forty-two inches is what I was told.
Well, I don't know what the exact measurement is, but Charlotte's on to something here. Instead of being a three-foot door, I think it becomes some, I don't know what the measurement is, but-
Well, it's not three, it must be at least five.
Or it might be four and a half. I mean, we do it all the time. ZBA knows-
You just said forty-two inches, four and a half.
Yeah, right.
You know, forty-two inches is just about three feet.
That was what your office told me that it was, was that it was forty-two inch opening.
And with no door.
With no door.
Sounds like a hallway.
John?
Unless it's correct, the building commissioner won't approve a building permit, so.
He'll take care of it at that level.
He'll make sure it's correct when she applies for the building permit.
You mean he'll correct the drawing, or he'll change the wall that's being taken down?
He'll do, he'll know what to do for it to be approved. I don't know which one he'll recommend.
It's a building code issue.
Oh. Okay, I think you might have a problem with the building commissioner.
Well, he might say okay. As long as there's no privacy, as long as it doesn't have a door.
Well, this is, it's detached anyway, so it's got to go before the-
It goes to ZBA.
It's going to ZBA anyway.
So they'll be dealing with it anyway.
Yeah. Pat?
My question is, you're removing a bedroom, and I understand however that can be done, and the building commissioner says okay, but by doing what you're planning to do, you're also removing the closet for a bedroom, it looks like. So you'd have a bedroom down here with no closet.
The closet I plan on building into a corner of, again, this was only brought to my attention at the end of last week.
Ah.
So I was trying to figure out how best to fix this problem and building a closet in the corner. So again, the hand-drawn plans, if I'd known it was going to affect the primary home, I would have had the architect draw up the house plans properly. When I did this, the hand-drawn were acceptable. So I fixed it enough to be able to get in, to see where I'm at, what I needed to do, so then if we do have to hold this over and I have to bring you back any information, I'm more than happy to do that. But I didn't want to come in here in two weeks and have done more things wrong. So I wanted to at least get in front of you, find out where I needed to be, because that drawing is deceiving. It is not a small wall we are taking down. It is quite a rather large wall and space in between the two.
It might be a matter of a clearer drawing. Jim, you seem to want to-
Well, I just think that we should take their word that they're removing a bedroom from the main house according to zoning, and then let them deal with zoning after us. We could move on. Because, I mean, that's really not our issue. If they're going to remove a bedroom from the main house, they're staying with the same four bedrooms or three bedrooms or whatever it is. And then the definition of the opening is really a zoning board issue, not ours. We, I don't know, we've never really got down into taking measurements of doorways before.
But that's because we haven't had this particular circumstance, so we'll see how it goes. There are other issues here. So moving on from that, the size of the opening between the two rooms, the simplest solution would be to just leave the closet and move the other wall. But up to you and the building commissioner.
Yeah, because there is a, if you're looking, heading towards that closet, down the length of the building, you've got this hallway there, and you have the wall that forms the closet. So then you've got this open area, it's eleven foot six. There's a wall that forms that other bedroom. So I would think that would be the wall that should be opened up. And that way you have this big space there, as opposed to a little closed-off space with the hallway, and you can retain the bedroom in one corner, one corner or the other.
She's going to review her options before she sees the building commissioner.
Yeah.
And talk it over then. Other issues? Jim?
Well, I just wanted, for public discussion, the math doesn't quite work according to the bylaw that we intended to pass, but I think we're going to be informed tonight that we, when we passed the recodification, we left a piece out, and that, so that this, they don't have to comply with our 40% rule because-
Is that the way that turned out?
Yeah, because it was left out, and it's something that can be fixed. But I think it's really almost inconsequential, the difference they're looking for, it's such a small amount, that we'll just let, that part should just be let go, we'll fix it in April, and the next person will have to deal with the 40%, and these folks can move on because it isn't that big a deal. That's just my own personal-
Yeah, it's under 800 feet anyway.
Yes. So we're, yeah, I'm not worried about that. That's our fault, not theirs. They're going by the current bylaw. It wasn't our, that was a mistake, but we'll fix it. They get an advantage, they get 10 more feet or whatever it is.
Whatever.
It's not a big deal.
It's not a big deal.
Then we get another, we get affordable, not affordable, we get another housing unit in our town, which we need desperately, and so that was just my vision, or talking about that. We'll fix it in April, next year.
Okay, but something does need to be done about clarifying the wall issue, because-
The wall's serious, but that's a ZBA issue, not ours.
If they keep, if they keep the five bedrooms, they need a de-nitification system.
Right, they got to, they got to lose a bedroom, and that's up to the building commissioner and the ZBA.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I don't understand, the front of this overview that I was given says that we're only at 36.5%.
It's the measurement system that you're talking about. You're looking at one floor and the second floor being equal floors. And what happens, it really isn't equal. When you look at your main house, we used to have a formula that took different percentages for the shape of the roof, and that was left out.
Oh, I was told it was first floor, and then I believe 75% of the first floor for the second half-floor.
But I think-
Yes, that's technically correct.
That's correct, but that didn't make it, it didn't make it to the new bylaw, that's the problem. You're right.
Okay, because it also, again, came from your office.
Yes.
It's, we found it when we were reviewing your application, and we discovered that we can't actually enforce the way that 40% was calculated, but you satisfied the 40% rule, you're under 800 square feet.
I'm going to let you go. It's our mistake, not yours.
You've satisfied the-
Okay, I just wanted to, I didn't calculate this. I actually originally started at 660-something square feet, and I was told that I had more to work with.
You do, you do.
Okay. All right.
Forty percent of the structure, according to our math, is roughly 750 square feet, which again is less than 800 square feet. So right now you are fine in terms of size.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure I didn't do anything wrong.
Nope.
Nothing wrong.
All right.
I hope we haven't confused you.
I think we have.
I think we have.
Well, this is the first time we've heard, I just heard about this today. This is new. We did something, was left, the recodification, we left some stuff out.
But it wasn't going to impact her application.
Sold.
Good.
Okay.
Not significantly, it's good.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So included in your packet and what we gave to the applicant, the engineering division, it's satisfied with the application. There's some comments from the water division, which you'll probably get to when you get the permitting. And then the last item is really just the confirmation of that 42-inch opening. We did confirm that with the building department. So that is the minimum size that they'll have to satisfy. But again, that happens during the building permit application, so.
Okay, so as far as this board is concerned, our requirements have been met.
Your requirements have been met.
To good application, it looks like you're making an improvement to your property, thank you. And we can approve it now if we get a motion.
Well, we still haven't seen a site plan. I mean, what about parking and all the rest of the stuff that goes along with it?
Oh, I was going by comments.
They do have a site plan, so we know.
They do have a site plan. It doesn't have an issue.
That, this one?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. There's two dedicated spaces in front of the garage and the driveway where it actually is a pretty much long cut-through, and the width of it, there's actually two more parking spaces in front of the main house itself. So those four spaces have actually always been there, and that actually doesn't change.
Okay, so you have enough parking.
Yep. Site plan's good.
Does the driveway go through to both streets?
It does.
Yeah, I went out there, I didn't want to drive down the road because I didn't think it was right, but I said it has more than enough access.
You would have been more than welcome.
No, I just, no, I just looked.
But yes, it does. It goes all the way through, and it's wide enough that we actually can fit way more, but conveniently at least four.
Yep.
So again, I don't think we need to continue this to another meeting. I think that we can act on it now.
Well, we do because decision has to be written.
Yeah.
Right. We just don't vote on it tonight.
We have, we have two suggested conditions here.
We can say that we want to see an approval at next meeting and vote on it at that point. Because we have to have a written decision in front of us, otherwise.
Well, that's become our practice, not a policy, because it keeps us from making mistakes.
Yes. We've made them plenty.
That's why we did, we've made them before. So our practice is not a policy.
Not that we think we're going to make a mistake.
Not to prove it the same night. Just give time, you look for things.
My only question is, I was told that the preliminary approval, I can at least go to the zoning board now and start that process.
Yes.
Then you do whatever you want to do.
I just want to comment on the practice. It means that the applicant and their professional support have to come back a second time. So we might want to think about that.
We could change that if you want to, but we, after many years, we put this in place for a reason. If you think you have a new reason to change it, you're welcome to do it.
They really don't have to come back.
We have to vote on it.
If we're telling Jed to write a positive motion, we just read the positive motion and vote on it.
Keep it moving.
They don't need to be here.
Okay.
Unless you want to be here to hear it, but as long as one of us can be here, because I do-
You're allowed to come.
I don't, can't leave work again, but.
So could we request a positive motion for our next meeting on May 24th?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're going to be good to go.
Okay. Our next matter is a public hearing. The applicant is Neto Puliti. Special permit for parking with five feet of the front property line located at 797 Main Street. Public notice.
Yeah, the public notice was published on 4/22/22, 4/29/22 for this project, and 16 of butters were notified by regular mail.
Madam Chair, I am going to recuse myself from this meeting. I've been heavily involved in transactions all over this place with tenants and everything, and I just feel safer to say, I don't have a financial responsibility, but I'd just be better not to be there, so there's no appearance of conflict.
Okay. I also have a connection with this project in a way. It's my favorite place to go for meatballs. They're the best meatballs in town.
Sorry.
Sorry when you close, glad when you reopen. I'm glad you've located yourself firmly in Thelma.
Thank you.
So Jed, did you want to speak about this project?
I certainly can. This project is before you for special permit to approve or to allow six parking spaces in the front yard. As you can see on the site plan before you, those six spaces are located in front of the building. They are currently coned off, not allowed usage, but they are currently striped. And so the applicant is, again, seeking special permit approval from you folks per section 240, 14.1i, 5A and B of the zoning bylaw.
Right, and our attention is directed to that rather than the full lot, but because of the history on this, we might want to be looking at the full thing. You're probably aware that this has come before us before, and it was here in front of us for a long time, trying to straighten out.
We're just finding out a lot of stuff right now. So we're just trying, because we just bought the building in June.
Right.
So now we're just trying to get the additional parking in the front because of the elderly, where there's an easement on the back of it.
Mm-hmm.
They can't, a lot of the elderly can't walk from the back to the front of the building. So this is why we're trying to get those six additional parking spaces. I know we have some on the side, but those are for handicap, and then the other ones are a little bit further back from the building. And then I also do have seven employees, which, right now, there's not a lot of parking spaces over there.
How many parking spaces do you have?
We have nine on the side.
Mm-hmm.
And then we're trying to do the six, and then we have three on the other side. That's an easement.
So you have nine on one side, three on another, and you're looking for an additional six in front?
Correct, because we have to share, that easement in the back is a shared type of easement, and it's only for customers only, and it's only for nine spaces. So I don't have enough parking there.
So is that indicated on Cycle Lab, those nine spaces?
No, the parking spaces that I'm trying to get are in the park, in the front of my building.
Well, I know that, but you're talking about nine spaces, and I don't really see-
That's on the easement in the back. It's supposed to, was supposed to be a shared easement, and we didn't realize just recently that we couldn't park down there, employees couldn't.
Okay.
So the employees were parking down there.
Yeah.
Inlet in the front for the elderly and for the rest of the people, but then we got a notice saying that we weren't allowed to park there. My employees couldn't park there.
Okay, on the-
So it's for customers only.
So where will your employees be parking?
My employees are going to have to park in the side of the building.
Only?
Correct. And I'm trying to get the six parking spaces for the elderly for the front of the building, and then the two handicap there.
And your reasoning is that it's, as I understand it, your nine spaces are the ones that are right under where it says cycle on that plan, is that right?
No, that's the bank.
Those are the banks?
That's the bank side.
So your side is on the other side where it says avenue?
If you're facing the building, excuse me for interrupting.
Yeah, no, you're going to speak.
If you could go up and-
You need to come here.
Come to the podium.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We're new with this, and it's a little confusing.
It's not that formal.
There's a lot of easements. When I bought the building and everything, it was a surprise, pretty much. So the nine parking spaces out back are allocated for 815 and Eastern Bank for their customers, but their employees parked there, too. But I have respect for everybody, I work with everybody, so I told my employees that, you know, when I read the easements, that it's only for customers and not for employees. But the smarter way would have been for employees in the back and have the customers in front, but it doesn't work with the easement on Cycle Way. So I'm willing to work with anyone. We're trying to get the six spaces up front for the elderly. I don't want to see anyone from the back. 60% of our customers are elderly, 60%, walking from the back all the way to our store. I'd like to see them park in the front. It's easier for them.
And it is a safety issue.
It is.
People were using that for cut-through.
Yeah.
So they were going fast in that parking lot and cutting through the front of the building, because I know the construction guy there did-
Almost got hit.
... complain, because he almost got hit out front because they weren't used to that building being emptied for so long.
I'm trying to make it as safe as possible. They come in through hogs and dogs, they spit, and they come out of our parking lot. Eventually I'm going to have that blocked off. It's a safety issue right there. Someone coming in and someone leaving, there's going to be an accident. So I'm going to do the right thing. I'll have a walkway for the fish people. I like hogs and dogs, I know easements are bait. I'm going to have a little open space so they can park on the side.
Well, the front, too, is going to have flowers and stuff in it.
We're going to beautify it, we're going to put trees.
With the, you know, yeah, with the whiskey barrel.
But it seems like no one wants to work. I'm willing to work at the bank. The bank was lax enough to let us park in our space for a while, but then they got reprimanded. We just opened up. We're just trying to do the right thing.
I'm glad that you are, and we're trying to help you do that.
Thank you.
So we want to all be clear on what that is.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I want to know, on the board, any questions about what the proposal is?
No.
And what's being asked of us?
No, but I'm still, I realize that you can't park on Cycle Ave. There's a heavy bound line across the top of that, and there's that paved area that's further back on the lot from the nine spaces. What happens with that space back there?
Okay, let me explain to you. I cannot block anything off. This is an easement going this way, that I have to ensure for two million, I gotta plow it, I'm gonna take care of it, sand it. I just found out I'm responsible for Cycle Ave, too, but that's not my property. But I'd be willing to help out. So there's an easement that comes through, so that parking lots can come through, the bank can come through. If I block it off, they'll have no way getting in. The original plan showed it closed in.
Yeah.
Sir, I'm sorry to keep interrupting. Could you speak into the microphone?
Need to be at the mic.
Thank you. And Jed, on what you've just shown us, it is much clearer. Explain the way the colors work.
Say that again?
He's going to explain how the colors on that drawing, what they indicate.
That's the easement. The yellow is the easement.
He's gonna explain it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's fine.
That's okay.
That yellow area, as you just mentioned, is the actual travel way. That's our understanding.
Okay.
The easement for vehicles to pass through and around the building.
And that easement is granted to the owner of Cycle Ave?
I believe it's a shared easement between the two properties, 797 Main as well as 815 Main.
815 Main, correct.
That's my reading of it.
Okay.
The blue on that image indicates the parking that's allocated to 815, which is the adjacent properties.
But it's not there. It's non-existent. It was prior, that plan never went through, so that whole easement thing is null and void. The only thing that's alive is the easement this way.
This is the way that's over, down easement.
The other one's never got through, never got planned, never got built, never got dug out. The only thing that's, the only thing that's deeded is the easement, the drive. That's it.
So our reading of that document indicates where the parking that you're allowed to use, to your point, the green...
Yes, yes.
The green section on that is the nine spaces that you referred to earlier.
Yes, yes.
And the blue is what we understand to be for the adjacent properties to use that parking.
Yes.
I think what you're referring to is perhaps the four spaces that are on that image on the left-hand side.
Correct.
Which are currently not in place. There's only two spaces, yeah.
There's bushes there.
So for the board's consideration would be, currently, the easement language indicates four spaces are required to be on that side, so I believe it would be our recommendation that the site plan gets amended to show four spaces on that side, so that it's clear and it matches what the easement language.
Okay, so one would be make it clear on the drawings that we have.
Yes.
But two, what marking is there on the pavement now?
Uh...
How would a person using that understand where to go to park?
There is no pavement markings, but you potentially could ask that they do the same thing that Eastern Bank did and hang signs on the chain-link fence.
Yeah.
I believe they've got signs where the blue is along Cycle Ave to indicate that that's for your customers only.
And would there be striping painted on the asphalt?
Ideally, yes, yes.
But it's not there now.
Yeah.
Very light.
Is it your plan to put striping in the area you want people to be able to park in front?
Yes.
It's already paved, so I only have to have the white lines put in.
That's it, in the front, that we want to do for the elderly.
So we're gonna do the whole parking lot when we do that one?
Would there be any way to prevent people from just using that new six-car space in front as a little drive-thru?
No, dangerous, very dangerous.
Too dangerous.
Big, big, no, too dangerous. I'm here for safety. No, too dangerous.
We'd have to block it off with something.
Yes.
So you are gonna block it off? Okay, that's the plan.
Way dangerous.
It has to be blocked off, because the cars are cutting through there.
Yeah, I've seen that you've put up cones.
It's a safety. And we have the cement things there.
Yeah.
And we're waiting to have the landscaper guy come out to landscape that.
That'll be nice.
But we were trying to get this approved for the parking, so we could get the lines in the landscape.
We have a little good plans for the property, and you'd be very happy, very, very neat, very clean, very green. All we want is the six spaces up front. That's all we're asking for right now.
Okay, because we'd like the plan that tried so hard to get approved and built before, because it added an eating area to the front, but particularly it added a landscaping after the street.
But we're not a restaurant.
We're not a restaurant. We're a grocery retail store.
Yeah. What I'm trying to say is that landscaping that's parallel to Main Street...
Oh, it's pretty.
Was, it's really good looking.
But we don't have any parking.
We have no parking, and plus, for the future, the way the economy's going right now, you're gonna see a lot of restaurants closing in this town. I know it's off the beaten path, but right now, I wouldn't want to have a restaurant.
Ah.
It's not a very good future for the restaurant business.
We're more of a deli grocery type of...
I know, I go there.
Yeah, I thank you very much, by the way.
Good food, thank you.
So we're just trying to get the parking, just so people can park there in the winter.
That's it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we've got the senior place across the street that more people come over.
We have a lot of people that come that are seniors, and we want them, we were thinking to have them park in facing the building. That's even worse. Someone wants to cut through and hit someone just backing out, not very good.
Would be worse. So I think we're clear now. You're gonna have a clearer plan, and you're going to paint the parking on, you'll be striping at it and landscaping.
Correct.
Any questions?
Yeah, I see, oh, I thought you said Pat. Go ahead, Pam.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was looking at that, seeing arrows going out that way. Are you planning to have an entrance there?
This is the old plan. That's not the new one.
That's not the new one.
Wait a minute, no, no, you gotta stand back.
Come back here.
Right here.
Right, okay.
What's not listed, but it should be done, on the bank side, that should be only a one-way.
There is a light faded arrow on that if you look on the ground, but it's very faded.
You're right, very faded. It should be one-way. You have an entrance to come in my parking, but then the road Cycle Ave and part of my easement should be a one-way. You have people coming in and people that are leaving are gonna hit.
Right.
My plan is to make that as safe as possible for all my consumers and for the public. I have the right idea, but it seems I'm always hitting the brick wall.
That's, that's what I was gonna suggest, is that coming in and going around that way one way.
Or you can loop it around my driveway, because I'm gonna have you come in, you can loop it in, I'll loop it out. But if someone's going all the way around, they can go out Cycle Ave.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we're in agreement. Pam?
Yeah, I was just saying, I was over there picking stuff up on Saturday, and there were cars coming in from all directions.
This is what we're trying to solve.
That's what we're trying to solve, and I wish you'd help.
It's, yeah, it's far worse than I actually thought it was, but much nicer than your other locations, so.
Hmm.
But as we were, we sort of pulled up in the front, I'm not even sure we were...
In the right spot. This is what we're trying to solve, this area.
I think you need some very distinct signage that says, "Customers of..."
Yeah.
You know, "Please park here," because...
And I'm pleading to get a "Do Not Enter" sign at the corner of my building, so it says "Do Not Enter" for safety's sake. I think eventually...
Trying to force them to go up and around.
Yes, yes.
You know, once you're in your car, if you have to go up and around, who cares?
Yes, that's the only safest way.
Right, right, and the arrows will be there. Bob?
I don't see any problem with having the added parking in the front. There are other businesses right along that do have parking already in existence. If you look at the space behind those parking spaces, there's plenty of room to back out, so they can back out and head back out the same way. Same on the other side, there's plenty of room, which, to me, is one of the biggest issues when it comes to parking, when you have lanes that are too narrow for cars to back out. So I think this is a good solution, and I would be behind it. I mean, this is a difficult site, and we want it to succeed.
Thank you.
So I'd be in favor of this configuration.
Good. John?
I agree.
Any other? With the understanding that we'll have the signs, the cleaned-up plan, and the striping on the asphalt, if you could give us a...
Positive motion?
A positive motion for the next meeting, then you'll be all set. Would you like to come forward?
Public comment.
I'm sorry, the butters, right. Excuse me.
Yeah, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the planning board. Ed Kirk, attorney, office in Osterville, representing 815 Main Street LLC, who is the, that's the entity that owns actually three parcels that surround 797 Main Street. As you're looking at the property from the rear, you've got parcel, and if you're using the applicant's plan, 815 Main owns parcel six on the right, and owns Cycle Ave, which is Lot 41, and owns Lot 18, which is on the left.
So it surrounds...
Yes.
Lot 19.
That's correct. And customers, I should say tenants of 815 have easement rights over this parcel. They come in, as shown on that, on the plan that's up there in yellow, and technically, and I think practically, this plan is really incomplete. It should have shown and should show where that easement is located and who has rights, because it's an important part of your consideration with respect to a number of issues, not the least of which is safety. And we did hear some discussion about it being dangerous, and that's one of the concerns here, because we have employees of the bank who have a right to park on parts of Cycle Ave, and other customers, including customers of the bait shop next door. So there's, it's not just the traffic that's generated by this business that comes onto this site. It's traffic generated by customers and employees of two other locations. And our concern is that when you have a substantial amount of traffic coming onto the site, and you've got right at the entrance, and there's been some discussion about people's observations about cars wheeling in and cars wheeling out, and when you have large vehicles, trucks and so forth, people coming in, there is a concern on behalf of my client for safety, for his tenants and their customers. People backing out of these spaces right next to Main Street, while cars perhaps are trying to come in, or cars are coming down, heading towards Main Street, past the building, where there's a little bit of a blind corner, and there's a space right there. So you've got the potential for fender benders at least, and, you know, if you've got a lot of elderly folks, I suppose, we certainly don't want anybody to be in harm's way. So I think that the plan should be, before you vote, I think you should see the plan with the easement on it, so that you've got the full picture, and we think that the safety concern should be paramount, and, you know, we'd be very concerned if parking was allowed, six spaces right next to the entrance and the exit going out onto Main Street.
I see, so your concern is that people, if they were to use either set of three spaces, they're going to be backing into the easement.
They're gonna be backing into the easement.
And the easement really is shared by your owners...
Yes.
And these owners.
That's right, right.
What are the times of day that most of your users are coming through the easement?
Well, I know that, you know, the bank has certain hours of operation, banker's hours, I suppose you would say, but I'm not familiar with the hours of operation for the bait shop and the hog and dogs. I imagine it's a, you know, I think they get going early in the morning and into the evening, but I can, I can ask Mr. Jamal the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you. Could you come forward to the microphone? Thank you, and identify yourself?
Hello, everyone. I own the three properties that you mentioned. The owners of Slice of Italy did not tell you exactly what went on in this situation. When they first bought the property, I'm sure the lawyer did title search, and they know that the easement is recorded. What I heard the gentleman say right now, that he's gonna block a line between hog and dogs in the parking lot. He cannot do that. It's a recorded...
Oh, excuse me.
It's a recorded easement.
No, we're gonna take turns.
Okay. It's a recorded easement showing a twelve-foot opening to remain. He cannot do that. He wants to put a sign on Cycle Ave that says "One Way," it's my property, not his. He cannot do that. So that's out the door. He wants to restrict people from doing certain things. He cannot do that. I went to see him, and I told him who I was. I said, "I wanna be a good neighbor," back in September or October. Never heard from him. We sent him a lie up through, Ed Kirk, my lawyer, "Nice lot, we wanna be a nice neighbor, let's get together, let's do this." Didn't hear from him. Only recently, we sent him a lot of the fault under, under the easement regulations. He called and left a message to Ed, and then I faxed him, because I had, he had given me his number, and said, "Look, whatever your request is, please put it in an email so we could start talking." He said, "Okay." That was four days ago. Haven't heard from him. So he stood right here tonight, telling you a story that he cannot deliver. He cannot block between hog and dog. We have an easement that is recorded, and we'll just have to go to court. It's that simple. He is not following due process, coming to you for, for a, to park in the front. A, two parking spaces or more, you need site plan approval. B, your zoning bylaw says you cannot park in front of a building. That's your new zoning bylaw. C, he have not complied with anything the easement says. Nothing. And the last thing is, he claimed he wants this for elderly people in the front. That's such a horse crap, not even funny.
Well, language...
Give the impression, okay? I'm sorry, but I can't believe, he won't call me, he won't talk to me, but he comes here and tells you a bunch of lies.
Okay, this, this isn't a court.
Okay.
This isn't a place for an argument.
If, if the front really for elderly, I'll be okay with four parking spaces handicapped. What I see people park there now is nothing but landscapers and trucks, oil trucks pulling half the truck is out in the, in the driveway. The other day I was there.
Can I say something?
Not right now.
Let him finish.
And I drove down between his building and easement's building, and I went around the back. Somebody was already parking, you know, he's using illegal parking right now. He doesn't care that he's doing that.
Um, excuse me, I understand that you're upset by this situation.
I'm not upset. I'm just, I just like the truth.
You sound upset, but I'd like to say that the issues that you're raising, really, who has a right to do this or that, that will be a matter to be settled. As you said, I hope not in court, but I think that we have a town council that we can refer this to before any decisions are made, so that it can be looked further into to see where are the rights. There was a question about whether or not the easement is a registered easement. There've been several questions raised about it.
Yes.
So we understand your concerns.
That it's signed easement is recorded in the land court, because it's just land, and there's also an agreement to go with it that is signed, okay?
And we need to know the import of that.
I went down the other day...
And I think the easiest, the cheapest way to find out is to find out, get an opinion from the town council, which we will do.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
He just can't block the streets, and he can't put, it's my property.
Right now, we're not too sure.
You heard him saying it. He's gotta put "Do Not Enter." He can't do that.
As I understand...
I own the land.
The property line, the property ownership line has import, and I think we need to have it determined exactly what that import is, when it appears to be somewhat in conflict to an easement with a changed use. So that's really what we're looking at here.
Okay.
And it needs to be looked at legally.
Okay. Cycle Ave, when you go, when you go in between his building and easement building, and you go around and take a lot to go out Cycle Avenue to Main Street, that's hundred percent my property, hundred percent. He have no right to do anything there, except to pass on it, period.
I understand your opinion, but I am not a lawyer.
It's not my opinion, it's the truth.
So we're...
And I'm sorry to be, you know, if I didn't call the gentleman back in September, I actually visited him, went to see him. If I didn't do any of that, and he's saying all these things tonight, I would be okay with it. But I tried.
I hope that you both keep trying, but we're gonna involve the town council before it goes further. John, you wanted to say something?
I just wanna ask two questions. I wanna understand this.
Yes, sir.
So you're opposed to the six parking spaces in the front as they're designed?
Mm-hmm.
And what if the six parking spaces were facing the building directly? Would you be opposed to that also?
Well...
Or would you be in support of that?
I will not be in support of that, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I almost got hit the other day, myself.
That's my question, that's what I needed to know.
Okay, because I went around the building and trying to get out. I mean, I went, I was, I never finished the statement, I'm sorry. I went in between his building and hog and dogs, and I went around, took it out. Some person, a landscaper, was parked in one of these six parking spaces, and we both had to put brakes on in an emergency situation. It is not out of my mind, this will be disaster for anybody who's leaving Cycle Ave or coming in, and, because you're not gonna see the backup lights, like reverse lights come on,[1646.54] in, and, because you're not gonna see the backup lights, like reverse lights come on. You're not gonna see them, you're gonna see the side of the car, if this is the parking in his Cycle Ave, and he's his entrance. If you're pulling this way, you're not gonna see, I'm not gonna know you're going out.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you may.
How you doing? I'm Nettie Pallidi Jr. I just had a quick.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Oh, I'm Nettie Pallidi Jr. My quick thing was, like, that was like at Cumberland Farms for a long time. And when people just mad, just look at the Cumberland Farms that they built in East Falmouth, like that new one. I mean, it's like, it's like Grand Central Station. I mean, was there a lot of accidents on record back then, when it was like a gas station? When cars were going in both directions? Like when you, you know, like when you remember getting gas, you'd pull in and you could go in either way. I mean, that was my only thing, like, he's starting to really pick things apart. But, I mean, I was just thinking, I know he's getting upset, but.
Thank you, that's a good point that it was.
Yeah, no, I mean, it used to be a company.
It had that parking there before. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other concerns on the board? I think we need to get.
The issue of backing into an easement, every space there backs into the easement.
Yes.
Exactly.
So.
They will. And we have that, such a situation of people backing into what essentially is a driveway in many instances all around town. It's not different. So we're familiar with its dangers.
Madam Chair, if I may, could we ask some clarifying questions before we move on?
Yeah.
Sure.
And it's in relation to the easement and the circulation. Is there opposition to that being a one-way circulation?
It's, the easement's on my land. May, I'm sorry. No.
I think the whole thing's gonna be a civil matter.
Yeah, it's a civil matter. That's gonna be a civil matter.
We're just trying to get the.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't wanna create any waves. You know, Cycle Ave might not be, haven't been buildable. It's supposed to be a way for electricity, for piping, for trucks to go by. They get a fence up. I mean, I don't wanna create a wave. I don't wanna have to go back to the agreements back in the day, back in 1957, 56. Let's let things die, and let's get approved of this, and work together. That's what I wanna do.
Let's work together.
And you're creating a mess, you are. And your building has.
Wait, 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 wait.
Wait a minute, please, please, let's have some order here, or we're just gonna have to close it down. I don't think that you're going to reach an agreement tonight.
No, I agree with you.
And we're going to get further information from the town council.
Correct.
And there'll be time before the next meeting, or even further out. Because this matter has.
Oh, I have one more thing. Can I, he, I, he did.
We don't need, the deadline on this goes to August 8th.
He did get a contact from, he lied.
Just a moment.
I got a letter.
Sir, I want you to stop talking.
I'm sorry, yes.
Because it's not adding to finding a solution.
Okay, I get it, I get it.
It's not. It's just continuing a regimen that we're not gonna solve tonight.
Okay.
Because we all need more information.
Yeah, we definitely do.
Let's get that.
Yes.
And calm down before we try to, to see where we can get together. So with that.
We need input from the town council, and we need a better drawing.
We do. We need a much clearer drawing, and we need better written requests for what exactly you're asking for. Jed, did you have further questions?
No, I think, I think we're good for this evening.
Is there any way that we could get a closer date in August, though?
Um, August is your deadline for completing this project, so we have that amount of time if we need it. We, if there's any possibility of your being ready for, always for the next meeting coming, that would be our preference to move it forward.
Go ahead.
So the next time we're meeting is May 24th, and you can be ready for then. And if you two can work together in the meantime, that will help you out. But we'll be working with the town council.
Okay.
Planning staff will also reach out to both sides, try to understand, you know, the concerns on both sides, and report back at the next meeting.
That'd be wonderful.
As well as the report back from town council.
Right.
We'll be in touch with them.
Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So, this is a special permit, so we're continuing this.
Yes.
Yes.
Until our next meeting, May 24th?
Correct, May 24th.
May 24th.
And I think, don't we have to take a vote on that?
But if they're not ready for the 24th, we'll just move the date forward.
Yeah, I think we need to take a vote on that, because it's a special permit that the board votes to continue this hearing.
Are you still going, should they leave?
No, no, no.
No, no, do we have a motion to continue?
That's what I'm doing now.
Yeah.
I move that the board vote to continue this hearing, the special permit hearing, until May 24th. Same time, same place.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Maybe it will be easier now.
We can't do this.
Can't do it.
You know, we can't have this conversation.
Can't talk anymore.
Okay, good night.
Now you know why I accused myself, I saw this coming.
Why, why?
I think we talked about this project.
All right, we're not gonna talk about it anymore.
Housing up above, didn't we?
Yeah. It was a better proposal, okay. Moving on, our next matter is a planning board discussion for 04 Hayway Road, and this is a request to give Jed authority for an administrative approval for changes to site plan review previously approved. Wanna talk about that?
Absolutely. So as you may remember, this site plan review for an accessory dwelling unit application was approved by you folks in 2020. This applicant is requesting a minor change and looking for administrative approval to do so. The minor change includes this door and this double window here. This window, this is all the proposed plan, and what I'm gonna show you is what was previously approved. So it's gonna be a bit of a scroll up and down here.
Yeah.
Actually, what I can do is just minimize. So this, this originally proposed sliding door, they are looking to replace it with a double window. And this double window, which was originally approved, both on the back porch, they would like to replace that with a single, a single door. Yeah, it's just a swap.
Yep.
The confusion is just the type of door, it used to be a slider, it's now just gonna be a single swing door.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay, anybody?
I have a question.
Okay.
Is this even within our purview?
To give him administrative approval?
No, but to change windows to doors, we usually look at site plan.
But we also look at design.
We look at design.
Well, the design of the look.
Right.
Okay, for that, yeah.
Removing a little.
Under the design review, I would agree with you. Okay, now I understand.
That's part of the site plan?
Part.
Yeah, no, we do both. We do, we do design review and site plan, and this is a combined meeting, and you're right.
So I would like to move that the planning board allow administrative approval on this project.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go right ahead, Jed, it's none of yours. Committee reports.
That's a nice looking building.
Is this the first one?
I think this might be the second one.
Oh, okay. Then you're better now.
Right.
That's actually a good-looking little building.
Yeah, it is.
This is, this is the ones way, way up in the back.
Yeah, way, way.
Almost abutting the Sandwich roadside, lots are real deep.
Right.
That's a beautiful spot.
You liked it then?
Oh, I did.
Yeah, you did.
And that's a good-looking, it really looks like Falmouth.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna change that much.
No, that's a.
They'll just have to get the roof pitch right on the little canopy. So, committee reports. Anyone reporting? All? No?
I did that already. Yeah.
Okay.
I'd prefer to wait. We have some controversy going on. I'd prefer to wait until it settles itself, then I'll report on the transportation committee.
That would be nice for us, thank you. Right, and Pam, I think we're waiting until the new housing administrator is in place.
Well, that's part of it.
Oh, but that's the plan.
That's the plan Jed and I just talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, so we don't have committee reports for tonight?
I have just something that Jed could be bringing along. But I did have occasion to meet with Kimco, and they showed me a building that meets our current zoning, and I was a little disappointed in that, but I knew it was coming when we passed Mr. Cod, which, excuse me, I don't know, I was supposed to mention it away, but everyone else is doing it anyway.
All right.
That we didn't have the protection of Form Based Code, and now they were gonna be building to just Mr. Cod. And Kimco is coming with a plan that meets Mr. Cod, but doesn't exactly match up with our vision with Form Based Code, but our Form Based Code's still a dream. It hasn't happened.
How flexible are they?
Well, I didn't get into that with them. I made it very clear it wasn't my part to talk about the planning board.
Yeah.
I just said, I understand where you're coming from. The good news is, they prove mathematically that the numbers work, that we can build the apartments on the site and meet, meet the code. Meet our existing code.
Yeah.
One of the things they pointed out to me, and it was a little disappointing, but was not, that all the things that I was talking about, those nice little sketches of those buildings, they said the architect didn't draw them to scale, he made them look a lot better than they were, and they didn't fit. And I'd always been pushing, let me see a real drawing, let me see a real drawing, let me see the math, let me, and they never got it.
Uh, that's why.
And now I know, that was more, this is pretty, but mathematically, it didn't. The buildings weren't the right size.
Oh.
But they have a formula that their attorneys say meets it. And it looks more like 704 Main Street
Yeah.
than what I had hoped.
Yeah, so they're bigger buildings.
And they're contiguous, they don't break up. The building I saw actually was one big building with a green space in the middle. But it met all the components, and it had a huge, it had affordable units, it had the right amount of units, and the math all worked. And I said, well, it's not for me to give you any more advice than this, that has to come to the whole planning board, but.
Jim, are you free to say how much of that land Kimco owns?
Oh, it's public record, I don't have to say it.
Okay, so they own Staples and all the way to.
They own Staples, they own Starbucks, and they own Planet Fitness, and another space just beyond that.
Dynasty?
I don't think quite Dynasty. Dynasty might be the next, ten over, there's a vacant space there.
Christmas Tree Shops.
The people who own Christmas Tree Shop come back at the other way. There's three owners there. You got Cappy's, the Christmas Tree Shop Group, and Kimco. And the good news is.
And Christmas Tree owns the pet store.
Yes.
Right.
But I have been sharing with board members over the years, every time I saw Kimco doing the same development all over the country. This is one of the reasons why I was pushing hard for this, is because there is a trend to get rid of retail and make it into housing. It's just not gonna be as cute as I was hoping with Form Based Code.
Well, maybe through design review, we can.
Well, if you're, if you're okay with 704 Main Street, you're gonna be okay with what they're doing, it just doesn't.
Let's wait and see what it is.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm giving you a committee report, okay? I met with them as a committee of one.
704.
And I talked to them about it, and I said, well, it's not exactly my vision, but the numbers work.
What's their, their time hope?
Two, you know, generally a developer would love to get things done in one year, but would probably live with two.
Beginning when?
As soon as they put the paper in front of you, which could be any, they're gonna come to Jed. Have they set a meeting with you? I said, leave me out, their next meeting's with you, is what I said. I said, I'm not.
We've just had very conceptual conversations with them.
So you've started.
So, and they are eager to get started, so.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
I think it is wonderful. I just wanted to warn everybody, it's not as pretty as
Yeah.
the little buildings I was dreaming about, because we didn't do Form Based Code, but as John pointed out, Form Based Code may never happen.
It might, though, and Bob's right. They have to come before us for the design review.
Right.
Jim, how many units?
Remember, we've had some successes there.
Are they talking?
What?
How many units?
I don't remember the exact amount, it was a lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the number.
Huge, big, big numbers.
Like nineties?
No, more like fifty to sixty. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know the number, but it was, it was enough units to make the math work, and twenty-five percent of them are gonna be affordable, and they're all gonna be rental units. It's, it's everything we ever.
How much land is involved, an acreage?
I'd be estimating four, five acres.
I thought it was around nine.
Nine?
Yeah.
Well, it depends how far you go with it.
Yeah.
I, I've actually.
Very conceptual.
There's another parcel back that's all woods behind there, that I've been representing those folks for years, they're the same family that I sold the back across the street where we developed Kendall Lane.
Mm-hmm.
And they're the same family that actually built, it's, it was Helmers Circle, the Helmers family, and they actually built the quarter deck way back.
In the day.
In the day. And this is leftover land from a family that, they're just summer residents now, but they were really involved in town and owned a lot of people that was, in my day, the coffee shop was the Falmouth Package Store, you know?
Where is there woods back there? It's Worcester Court behind it.
No, there's a big section of woods behind it. You know? It's, it's, well, we should look at it, because the only point I'm making is, is it's not gonna be as pretty as I, as my little pictures were, because I think they were told, my pictures were unrealistic.
But we can work with them to make it prettier.
And, and the thing, the good news is, see, they're gonna, they're basically, see, they're gonna take down Staples, and they're gonna take down Friendly's, and they're gonna build a big building there, and it's gonna have a green space in the middle, and it's gonna be a lot more like 704 Main Street than the five or six buildings that were in my Density Done Right presentation. But Union Studios, we never got them to give me the math. Let's see how it fits. And they, these guys finally told me that it just doesn't work.
Remember, if there's a green space there, there's landscaping there, too.
Oh, it's beautiful. It's a nice place to live. I mean, I, I think it accomplishes a lot of what we wanted, but I'll let you, I didn't wanna go any further.
But if it's nine acres, they, they can put more housing than sixty.
It might be seventy. I didn't wanna remember the number, it's a big number.
The hangup is gonna be our sewage capacity.
They have it.
Where?
They do?
They have it.
What sort of timeline are they talking about?
We have to be careful, because we're not on the agenda for this.
Oh.
He said a couple of years from when they start.
Committee report. The only other part I wanted to talk of, the people that own the woods.
Yeah.
They told me they wanna be partners and get involved and become, and do a comprehensive plan for the whole thing, and not just this one building, so they have more design. So there's some work to be done. The neighbors, I think zoning's.
Who doesn't like work?
The zoning's gonna encourage the neighbors to get together and put a plan that works that makes housing for us, that somebody else builds other than us, and I think that's the important part.
That's the important part. Well, it is one of the important parts. So what kind of interest has been shown by the people who do own Christmas Tree and the pet store?
Haven't been part of the conversation. They're doing this totally independently, so they could do it with his own land, so they don't have to. In fact, the building they showed me does not include the woods, because they wanna be doing standalone. They don't wanna have a neighbor to control them. They wanna say, look, we can build this, it fits your zoning, let's do design review, and let's move forward. And so they're designing it to move ahead on its own, with the flexibility to talk to neighbors, but not have the neighbors have the control whether the...
Okay.
They're very prudent developers.
Makes sense, actually.
And they have a good lawyer, and they're gonna try to build it right to our buy rights owning.
We just saw what neighbors...
Right, can do to you.
They can influence people.
John?
So this is very exciting.
It is.
And I just wanted to check with Jed to see how much further along we are with the Cape Cod Commission for the growth incentive zone.
So we met with, Michaela and I met with Jordan Velozo, who is their chief regulatory officer, I believe it was last week, to firm up a, or to try and get a pre-application meeting with the commission staff. Apparently, they are extremely busy, and so it's been difficult for them to get, find some free time to meet with us. But we anticipate having a pre-application meeting before the end of the month.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah. And Michaela's already done some fantastic work with a presentation for not only the board, but also for all the department heads, because again, we're gonna be asking for information, departmental information to basically justify or to allow for this growth incentive zone. So we're really gonna be pulling together a lot of information when we go to apply for it, so...
The growth incentive zone would be all of the mixed residential, commercial overlay district?
That's correct.
Not just the site?
That's correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
John, what, do you wanna review what that will give us? It's a pre-approval that it gives for development, right?
It allows it to be approved and not have to get Cape Cod Commission approval.
One year is what it gives you. Go to the Cape Cod Commission, between all the meetings you have and appeals, it's another whole year to the process.
So it's well worth having.
It's really a big deal.
It expedites what we wanna have expedited as a community.
Which is excellent. Okay, so it's coming along. In fact, for zoning that was just passed last November, it's amazing that there's this much coming along so quickly, right?
Kimco has nothing to do with Union Studios, they're doing their own thing.
Right, it would be good if they talked together, but we'll...
You know, we spent a lot of effort with Union Studios in pushing that, and Kimco's gonna do their own thing. We're gonna make sure that people are talking to one another.
Except, we never passed anything from Union Studios, it's a dream.
Right.
Yeah, but we've been pushing it for a long time.
Right, but...
It's not gone yet.
Ideally, if you could get the two of them to talk to each other, and maybe they could share some thoughts on it.
The other effect it could have, trying to push that together, is to ask them to go faster, so that they can get in ahead of it and do what they want. Because it sounds like they know what they want and would like to get it. But you're right, Paul, it'd be better to have them work together. Where are we with Union Studios?
I had a feeling you might ask. So as of today, we have not received the draft bylaw, but we are expecting it very soon, so...
Haven't we heard that before?
Well, they are also...
Probably many times.
Yeah.
They are also putting together the renderings that will go along with the bylaw itself, and so I believe that's been the delay, is just developing those. But our contract with them has...
How did you get so low down on their priority list?
I would say that it's slowed down on their priority list, it's just been, as you know, been a transition period when, you know, I had the takeover, and so there's been a lot...
It's not them.
It's just been a matter of extending their contract, following up with them, and making sure that we understand how the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, also known as Mr. Cod, will integrate into the form-based code or will not. And I think that's the next conversation, about will it still live there, or will it not? And if it does, what components will and what components won't. So it's a more complicated conversation is what I'm getting at. But we are eagerly anticipating a bylaw coming, I believe it should be coming this month.
It's not insoluble, because Mr. Cod has passed, its provisions are very clear, and I would think we would want them all to appear in the new, what will be, we hope, not an overlay, but the new zoning.
Correct.
Right.
So we wanna make sure that the board is comfortable with integrating the language from Mr. Cod into Davis Straits or the form-based code bylaw.
The point I wanna make is they're bringing a buy-right development, that the only thing we get to talk about is design review. Because we have let the gap happen, we stopped working on form-based code, moved ahead with Mr. Cod, moved ahead with codification, our attorneys, we did what we could. It's happening. That's probably a good thing.
Well, if it turns out that what they're proposing looks a lot like 704, I don't see that as being detrimental. 704...
It's just not as perfect as we were, the dream that we were talking about.
But we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good.
Exactly.
Correct.
Or we'll never get housing.
We've gone way beyond committee report.
Alright, I'm sorry, sorry.
Well, we were, you know, delving in.
I know.
Any other things that could pass as a committee report?
Slash announcements.
Yeah. So we'll count that as an announcement.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Okay, good announcement, thank you. General correspondence, none here?
We haven't, we didn't receive any?
Future agenda items? I do have one. I would like us to start formulating a timeline for planning the next comprehensive plan. I think that we need to really get going, and we need to commit ourselves to a start on it, and to who's gonna be working on it, and get a plan for putting it together. Because we've put it off until now, until we're sure that we have, you know, an official town planner. And let's do it. So if we could have for, on the agenda next time, a draft of schedule for creating our next comprehensive plan. Could we discuss master plan versus comprehensive plan? Could we have a discussion about? We will, have you? Yes.
Yeah.
That would be part of it.
That would be part of it.
But we'll discuss it then. Okay, Paul?
I could do that?
If I remember correctly, the last time it was a small group working on the local comprehensive plan, they worked long and hard for a year or more.
Right.
Oh, tribe, maybe.
Long time.
Long time, and did a great job.
And they had a lot of assistance from the assistant town planner at that time.
A tremendous amount.
We're talking about the town hiring an assistant town planner, I think. If there's a status for doing that, it might make sense to wait until he or she is on board, and that could be one of the charges that that person does with a small group from this committee.
I think that this could be really a bear under the saddle for getting that assistant. I think that if we put together a plan, we're supposed to be working on this.
The bulk of the work is done.
We have an enormous amount of foundational material, is really what we have.
Right.
But if you've looked at what the Cape Cod Commission has laid out, they want, they have their own language now, different things, we wanna compare it to the master plan, pieces, in my opinion, some things were left out. We'll all have opinions that go into the hopper, but we need to get going on it. And if we put it off until we have an assistant town planner, or say we're going to put it off till then, could be Christmas.
Alternatively, we will have to hire a consultant, because a committee of three of us, it's insurmountable for a committee of three to do. I know, because I worked on that from before we ever had a dedicated assistant town planner doing it, and it all always fizzled.
Well, but I am keeping in mind that Michaela is a very competent person.
Part-time.
Right.
And I'm not saying she's not competent, but Jed needs every minute of her time at this point in time. It takes a lot of time to put something like that together.
That's why towns hire consultants.
Correct.
I can put together a presentation for the next meeting that summarizes the difference between the master plan and the LCP, summarizes the Cape Cod Commission's requirements, and puts together a draft timeline, that's...
But I think we also have to remember that on the Cape, the master plan is called a local comprehensive plan.
It is.
They are equivalent.
That's its name, they are equivalent. That's part of a law that created the Cape Cod Commission, so we're not gonna change its name.
Right.
We know that, but it's really, does it cover the same things? Are we doing what we...
That we should explore.
We should definitely explore it.
I got a question.
And the process that we used, we might wanna rethink that process and get the department heads much more involved, because they are the most knowledgeable people about what the town is capable of doing, what it needs to do.
Which is what we did.
Each one of them, I'm sure...
They were involved, Charlotte.
They should be.
Very involved.
Like the first draft.
They were.
Who wants to be on this committee, raise their hand.
Oh, really?
I go back on it, it depends on what time of day and what day of the week.
Right.
Well, those will depend on who's on it.
But...
I just wanted to point out, when we did it, it was at least three years, and it was probably thirty, twenty-five, thirty Wednesdays for three years, for two hours.
At least.
It was a really big job.
And we did field trips to different organizations.
And meetings, it was intense.
Chamber of Commerce, we had the institutes.
It was intense.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met with everybody and got their input.
Those of you folks are talking about, oh, we're gonna do this, I wanna see who's gonna step up.
It takes an, Charlotte...
It's the part I'm most interested in.
Well, you can't do everything! You have no idea how much time that takes.
Does that mean you're not volunteering again?
Well, I'm gonna have to decide which life I wanna lead. No, really, I mean, there's an awful lot that goes into it, you live it.
But like I said, we have the bones to it.
We do.
And the initial intent was to have the goals and policies pretty much set, because they're so overreaching, and it was the action items that got changed and swapped out, and we really haven't done, we haven't erased them, they're still there, and some of them have been completed, and we need to redo them.
Needs a lot of update.
Some of the new bylaws that have been passed, we need to include them in what those goals are gonna be.
Yeah, you're right, Bob, it's not starting from scratch.
Definitely not, that'd be foolish.
Yeah.
Paul?
I asked a question about the assistant town planner, what's the status of assistant town planner? Do you know?
I believe the job posting should be posted very soon. And then once that job is posted, we will actively pursue interviews, and we're looking to hire as soon as possible.
So you're talking about later this year or next year?
I do not know.
We're slipping into a new era.
Because that person, if he or she has the experience, can help a great deal with the local comprehensive plan.
It certainly can.
Right.
I think that's an important element.
There's the consultant route also.
Absolutely, always an option.
Right.
We'd have to find the money for that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you'd have to find funding, so it's complicated, but I'll throw together a presentation, and we'll chat it up.
Okay, so we're getting it going. We're gonna have at least a draft of the logistics and can get going on it. Any other future agenda items?
I do.
You want?
We talked some time ago about having Tom Ferranti from Mashpee Commons come in later this year, I think that's something we should still pursue. He had offered to do that some time ago.
Well, that would be when we hear from Union Studios, they're connected. He's the form-based guy, right?
Yes, Union Studios is their architect, yeah.
Right. So those two are working together. So let's wait till he's, yes, but we won't forget.
But it would be helpful to have him come in sometime and talk to us later this year. And the other thing is, I know you've had a discussion with Bob Mescal at the Cape Cod Commission, and he offered again to go out to committees and things to give them a briefing of what the Cape Cod Commission is doing. And this morning at the EDIC meeting, he got up and offered to do it there, and we had a brief conversation, and he said he had talked to you, and he's willing to come to the planning board to talk about it.
Well, and he's spoken with Jed, and they're making an arrangement for that. So, and it all ties together really with our local comprehensive plan, possibly, because we will need them, but we'll see.
I don't recall them ever coming before this body.
Oh, you mean our representative?
Yeah.
Certainly the prior representative didn't. So it's good of Bob to initiate it.
So we'll be talking with him on Friday?
Yeah.